Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, March 2nd, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation. And being as this lies in District One, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Warren Holder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This proclamation this morning is in recognition of a piece of property that I think will play a vital role in developing and continuing to develop Henry County into what many people think it needs to be, and myself included. And with that, Ms. Brewster, would you come to the podium? This is a proclamation in recognition of Ms. Latrell Brewster for her generous donation to Henry County and the arts community. Whereas Ms. Latrell Brewster's ancestral home was once the site of the oldest mill in Henry County, as well as a tannery and general store that supplied all the needs of the local people for three-quarters of a century. And whereas Ms. Latrell Brewster's beloved grandmother, Magnolia Win Legwin, was a literary art enthusiast, and in fact kept journals about the life on the homestead that were published as a home concealed woman. And whereas Ms. Brewster herself, a lifelong patron and lover of the arts, took steps in the sales contract with Tuscaloosa Development to honor her grandmother by ensuring that the 8.5 acres of wooded tract that contains the Annabelleum Home, wellhouse, cemetery, and the remains of the mill on Tuscaloosa Creek would be used to support the arts. And whereas Ms. Brewster desired to have this property dedicated in such a way to facilitate the growth, development, and enjoyment of art in Henry County, in the Henry County community. And whereas the county will fulfill the wishes, covenants, and restrictions requested by Ms. Brewster by partnering with the Henry Arts Alliance to work with local artists and cultural entities to provide organizations a place to hold or present visual art classes, shows, musical performances, poetry readings, and related artistic programs for the community. And whereas no less than 25% of these arts events will be offered to elementary, middle and high school students at no cost or at a substantially reduced rate, such that all Henry County children will have the opportunity to participate in the arts. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its sincerest appreciation to Ms. Latrell Brewster for her generous donation to Henry County and her magnificent vision to advance the arts in our community. Thank you. If you would come forward. Would you like to make some comments?
Well, I'm just thrilled that the county is ready for this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the county, for the arts in the county, and for me, I feel very privileged to be able to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
We just found out that they had buses when Commissioner Holder attended school.
You know, I would point out to Ms. Brewster, drove the bus. And some of them say he didn't really get a birth certificate until he was old enough to wear shoes and walk.
We're very appreciative of your contribution, Ms. Brewster. Thank you so very much. We're excited to see the arts really taking a prominent, more prominent position in the county. It's certainly going to improve everyone's quality of life. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval of a lease agreement with Henry Arts Alliance Incorporated for property located at 2568 Legwin Mill Road. Our presenter is Ms. Latonya Wiley, County Attorney. That's exhibit number two. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. This item is directly related to the proclamation you all have just presented to Ms. Brewster. Before you is a proposed lease agreement with the Henry Arts Alliance. When the board accepted the donation of this property in January of last month, y'all directed staff to determine the best way to ensure that the covenants and obligations that came with the property were satisfied. And the Henry Arts Alliance became the best and logical choice to fulfill the county's obligations. With me today, or with us today, rather, is Ms. Leonard Schmidt, who is the president of the Henry Arts Alliance. They have reviewed this proposed lease agreement that carries out the terms that were specified in the proclamation. There will be art shows, music classes, poetry readings, and the Arts Alliance will facilitate those events occurring at the property. They will also maintain an office there for administrative purposes to assist with developing these activities and give them a place to write grants and conduct other administrative tasks necessary to carry out these obligations. So Ms. Schmidt will come forward, and she may have some items that she would like to mention to the board and/or answer any questions she may have. Staff has recommended that you approve this lease agreement. It is a 12-month lease agreement with four consecutive renewal terms that will be automatically renewed absent positive action taken by the board. So that will be the recommendation of staff this morning.
I am honored to be here, and I am so incredibly proud of what the county is doing and what Ms. Brewster is doing in our economic times and with everything that's going on, for you to step forward and have the foresight to give this house to us and let us grow the arts and expand the arts in Henry County, and for Ms. Brewster to be able to do that, and for her to really honestly have this as a vision makes me so incredibly proud to be part of this home and part of this project. The Arts Alliance, our goal, our mission, is to expand the arts in Henry County. We feel that each child, each adult that has the desire and the need to experience the art, to go forward with the arts, will be able to do that on our site. We have the ability to do classes. We have the ability to offer visual arts classes, painting, weaving, drawing, sculpting, all kinds of varied arts. We have the opportunity to do music classes. We have the opportunity to do play readings. I have had a number of authors, local playwrights, give me scripts, and I would love to do play readings out there and encourage more writing. Our Heritage Writers Group has already standing behind me to have two meetings out there. They currently meet at the Senior Center, which is not a bad place, but for them to expand their membership, they need to meet someplace besides there, and they're so incredibly excited. Side note on that, Ms. Brewster has left us a wealth of wonderful books in a small library in her home, and our Heritage Writers Group, in kind donation back, will catalog all the books and make a section that has Henry County authors as well as Georgia authors. So this is a wonderful opportunity for us to do all kinds of amazing things. We talked earlier about Ms. Brewster's left a number of farm, original farm, equipment and things out there that we would like to, at some point, do an event where we have arts and crafts of the era bringing out some of the farm equipment. And she has a neighbor that has a mule, which is offered to hook it up so people can see actually how that worked. And it will be very exciting. And we take all suggestions. I know Mr. Holder probably has a really wonderful art idea that he'd love to give to us at some point. Right, Mr. Holder?
Don't I look like?
But actually, I offer that to anybody. If you have a suggestion, please contact at the Arts Alliance. Please contact me. I would love to take your ideas and expand on them. So we are just so incredibly proud and honored to be able to do this. And I don't see this as a problem, but the formality will be at our next board meeting to accept it. So, do you have any questions for me? Or suggestions?
Any questions? Comments? I will not put you on the spot like your friend Kay usually does and have you sing part of a song from your musical, but I'm not going to do that to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I really do, I really, really do offer my ability to reach out to anybody, or if you know somebody that wants me to come and talk about the property, or somebody that wants to just talk about the arts in Henry County, please let me know. I am available to talk to young people. I go into schools all the time and talk to high school students and young students all the time about the arts. So please feel free to throw my name out there.
Any questions?
I got a comment, Madam Chair. I would be remiss if I didn't mention this. The resolution before us is an amended resolution. As generous as Ms. Brewster has been, and the foresight that she has had, and the roots that she has in her property, certainly from several generations prior, this property was actually conveyed to Henry County by Tuscaloosa Development, and particularly John Bonanno. Had it not been for their willingness to do this, then we still might not have got the property. So we cannot not mention the fact of Mr. Bonanno and his willingness to donate this to Henry County as part of the development agreement from several years ago. So I had to mention that because he is actually, Tuscaloosa Development is actually the conveyor of the property to Henry County.
And I think Commissioner Holder, Ms. Brewster would concur with you in that. She had a very good working relationship with Mr. Bonanno when Tuscaloosa Development acquired the property from her.
That's correct.
And she would share those sentiments with you.
Absolutely. And as you saw, the conditions and the restrictions that were put on that piece of property to Henry County came from Ms. Brewster.
That's right.
It did not come from Tuscaloosa Development. But the conveyance came from Tuscaloosa, and I wanted the record to be clear.
Well, if there are no further questions or comments, Mr. Holder, I'll look to you to make a motion on the resolution.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the resolution.
Have a motion to approve. You'll have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is under Elections and Registration, a resolution supporting the repeal of a local act known as House Bill 847, and urging the local delegation to introduce local legislation before the 2010 General Assembly repealing the same. Our presenter is Ms. Janet Shalnutt, Director of Elections and Registration, and that's exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning. Madam Chairman, Commissioners, this is kind of a repeat. We were here a year ago on March night passing a resolution. This particular bill that we were trying to repeal last year died on the last night of the session. I didn't really realize it was in trouble, but it died then. So what we're trying to do again is repeal House Bill 847. This bill says, "No person shall seek, be eligible to seek election to or serve as a member of the Board," which means Board of Commissioners, "if such person holds or is seeking election to any other federal, state, or local office." Well, the Constitution doesn't say that. If you're at the end of your term and you're going out in December, you should not have to resign when you qualify. This bill says you do. And in court, we found out that this takes away from the conditions set forth in the Constitution. The local act attempts to add to the rule set in the Constitution, therefore it's invalid. It was found unconstitutional. It costs quite an amount of money for law fees to go to court. And it's going to come up again sometime, whether it be two years from now or four years. So what I'm trying to do is basically get another resolution to take to Representative Blunsford. He asked that we do a new one. He said it was delegation rule, so that's why I'm backing in. Any questions?
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item?
Janet, Madam Chair, the intent of the Georgia law is the fact it's not a matter of having to resign to run for another office. It's just so that there are no overlapping terms, and it's just an additional cost to the taxpayer to hold a special election. So that's the reason that you can't seek an office if your term overlaps or that term overlaps. Is that not correct?
That's right. Let's say, just for instance, if the tax commissioner wanted to run for chair or seat, he would have to resign to run even if his term was ending in December. Does that make sense?
Currently, he would.
Currently, he would.
Otherwise, he wouldn't. If his term ended at the same time the position he was seeking began.
That's right. But right now, under this particular law, he would have to resign. What we're trying to do is make it back to what the Constitution says, that he should not have to resign when he was at the end of his term.
And Janet, this is, Henry County is the only county in the state that has such a provision.
We, actually, in court, they really had a hard time because there wasn't any law on something like this. And I did a lot of research, and we're the only county out of 159 that has this particular law. So I think it's, we either had to change the language or have it repealed, one of the two. And I think repealing it just takes it away and clears it all up.
And then the Constitution will dictate...
That's right. Now, if you're two years out, you're going to have to resign. There's no, and the Constitution states that.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Bowman?
Yes, Madam Chair. I do have some comments on it, actually, because what it does, if, because my term's coming up, if I elected to run again, then I would have to resign in April, leaving my district without any representation from April till January, basically.
Because two years from...
You know, I don't think that's, obviously, that's not fair to my district, because a lot of things could go on during that period of time without having representation of someone from their district. So I mean, it only makes sense. What doesn't make sense is how it ever got put in there to start with.
You know, I don't think it was the intention of how it was set up originally, and I think it was actually originated to keep somebody from running. But we found it came into big conflict and a lot of money. But unfortunately, two years out, they did, we'll work on that, see if we can come up with something new for the two-year-out ones. But I want to clear this one up first.
Well, no, I wasn't talking about the two-year. I was talking about the actual term coming up. I mean, I understand the two-year because, you know, obviously, you know, I think the United States Congress and the Senate, they can drop out now for president, and if they don't make president, they can turn around and go back to their other job.
That's right.
Their other little...
Washington must have a little more power than we do, but they can lose...
Well, they kind of write their own rules, and then they don't abide by their own rules. So I mean, but that's understandable. But anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
All right. If not, you have a resolution before you, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeffries. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is under Transit, a resolution requesting authorization to apply for the Federal Transit Administration's 5310 grant for fiscal year 2011. Our presenter is Mr. David Williamson, Transit Director, exhibit number four. Good morning.
The Georgia Department of Human Services is in the process of lining up their transportation contracts for 2011. Part of that process is the applying for the Federal Transit Administration's 5310 Elderly and Disabled Fund for the transportation contracts. The county's been a participant in this program for the past 10 years, and we're requesting permission this morning to go ahead and submit the 5310 application for 2011.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the submission of the application, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeffries. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is under Life Management Solutions, a resolution requesting authorization to accept a grant from the Council of Juvenile Court Judges of Georgia. Our presenter is Ms. Sandra Reagan, Director of Life Management Solutions, exhibit number five. Good morning.
Good morning. Back in September, we received a $7,500 maximum grant award from the Council of Juvenile Court Judges. And I try to stay on top of things, and they did have some additional funding for psychologicals and evaluations for juvenile offenders. And we received $3,000, and I would like to get this approved with the Board of Commissioners along with the budget amendment.
And there's no match, no cash match required?
No cash match, no.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item?
I think it's important to reiterate that there is no match from the county, that this is, you know, that, so that it does get out there very clearly that we don't have to put a, you know, we don't have any match. And I think it's very important, we reiterate that and make sure that it gets out publicly.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. If there's no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept the grant award.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to Public Safety, we have a resolution requesting authorization to accept a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Our presenter is Chief Phil Lacy of the Fire Department, exhibit number six. Good morning.
Good morning. Exhibit number six in your book is in regards to the resolution for the acceptance of a matching grant from FEMA. It's actually administered through the U.S. Fire Administration. This is the Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program that they have been running since 2001. We budgeted for the matching portion of this grant in this year's budget. The federal share of monies here is $146,973, and the match that the county will, this is an 80/20 match, the match the county is responsible for is $36,743. This grant award will do two things. It will refit some of our current fire apparatus with cab forward mirrors, which is basically something that we chose to do as a result of some safety assessments that we did with our drivers. And it will also provide large diameter hose, which is supply line for our fire apparatus. We've currently been in the process of purchasing that, but it's a rather expensive proposition. And since we haven't bought any new fire apparatus in a few years, we've had to slow that process down. So this will allow us to purchase large diameter hose and the required fittings and adapters for that, for the department.
Does any board member have a question pertaining to this item?
I have a question. I'm sorry, but I would have one. Bill, what portion of the $146,000, say, not as well say $147,000, goes towards the hoses? And what portion of that would go towards the mirrors?
The actual breakdown on that, and I'm not sure that I have that in front of me, but I think that the actual mirrors per each apparatus is approximately $1,100, I think is what we had bid for that, and per each apparatus, and we're doing 12 apparatus.
So the lion's share is going for the hose?
The lion's share is for the hose, and that replaces, or actually places hose on, I think, 14 of our pompers.
There again, on the outset, I think it's important to note that, you know, we're not spending $147,000 for mirrors. And I know that you did bring up the hose part, but just getting an idea of what we're talking about from the standpoint of how much the mirrors are as opposed to that, I think is very important for us to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you authorizing the acceptance of the FEMA grant in the amount of $146,973. I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bazler. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item under Public Safety is a resolution requesting award of a bid for delinquent account collection services. Our presenter is Chief Brad Johnson of the Fire Department, exhibit number seven. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. In front of you is our request for approval for our collection agency for our EMS billing. A few months ago, worked with purchasing to send out RFPs to, I guess, retrieve a different collection agency. The current, or the past collection agencies no longer in business, has kind of shut their doors end of last year. We recommend awarding professional recovery consultants. They had the most receptive offer or proposal back to us with a 22% charge rate. So today, I'm asking approval for that to go ahead with the contract with PRC Incorporated.
Does anybody have questions or comments pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
I'm sorry.
He smiled. I knew he had a comment.
Well, I think PRC, I think you stated PRC.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
That was just for clarification.
Yes, sir. Professional recovery consultants.
Are any of these companies, local companies, back?
No, sir. They're not local. I'm not really sure exactly.
And we may not have a local...
Not that deals with EMS. And we were looking for a company who deals with emergency medical services, because it is different, the guidelines are different, and really, some of the stuff we deal with, we try locally in our department through our billing division to handle it locally. Every effort's made so there's no more efforts we can do in the county to make sure our citizens are taken care of before this, even this comes into play.
Thank you, Brad.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Holder, do you have a comment?
I was just going to comment, the percentage of, it's 22%?
Yes, sir.
And that's certainly in line with collection agencies. It could be as high as 30, sometimes 40%.
We had some offers of 40% of RFPs sent back.
22% is attractive. And again, it's not pleasant to have to turn anyone over to collection, because most of the time, people that, there's an element that's not going to pay, but then there are people who are in tough times and can't pay, and I understand that. And I understand that we have to collect, too. It's just not pleasant.
It would be 22% on the amount collected, correct?
That's correct. 22% on the amount collected.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
It's not what you give them, it's what they actually collect.
There's no upfront cost to the counties, it's on their collection, on their performance.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you awarding the bid for collection services to Professional Recovery Consultants Incorporated. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Jeffries. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, under Public Works, the first item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for onsite waste wood grinding and removal services. Our presenter is Mr. Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, exhibit number eight. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members. Our DOT currently has a large stockpile of waste, wood and debris, limbs, stumps, and so forth, that we collect from road projects, storm damage, and just general cleanup along the roadway. This accumulated waste and wood needs to be ground onsite and removed from the DOT yard by a contractor. Sealed bids were requested through the purchasing department. Seven vendors responded. A Henry County vendor qualified for the local vendor privilege and was offered the opportunity to match the lowest bid submitted. S&amp;B Roll Off accepted the offer and will match the low bid of an out-of-county vendor. So DOT recommends award to S&amp;B Roll Off Incorporated. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I was glad to see that local company, because the low bidder actually was out of Alabama, and there was a very minute difference between the bids, and I'm happy to see that local vendor privilege being taken advantage of by S&amp;B. Any board member have a question or comment? All right. If not, you have a resolution before you awarding the bid to S&amp;B Roll Off Incorporated, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Jeffries. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. And Madam Clerk, will you please make note on the last two items that we voted on that Commissioner Bazler was absent? Thank you. The next item under Public Works is a resolution requesting the transfer of property on Reagan Road for intersection improvements, and that's going to be handout number one.
Madam Chair, we've come to the board before on this improvement, roadway improvement project that Georgia DOT is doing that involves Reagan Road, Kellytown, Ford, and Mosley. Georgia DOT is improving that, realigning Kellytown... Georgia DOT is improving that, realigning Kellytown Road up with Reagan Road and signalizing that intersection, as well as shifting 155 to get away of some dangerous curves in there. As part of this project, they're moving Reagan Road a little bit to the north and require some Board of Education property. The Henry County Board of Education, in an intergovernmental agreement, assigned that right-of-way over to Henry County. Now Henry County can assign that right-of-way over to GDOT. GDOT is in, is trying to get some stimulus monies or some ARRA money, so they need to certify right-of-way as soon as possible. So that's why we're trying to expedite this and go ahead and get them the necessary right-of-way so they can move forward with that project.
Do we have any questions or comments on the transfer of right-of-way for Reagan Road? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you approving the transfer of the right-of-way, and I will entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Bazler, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Board.
Moving on to Sploes, we have a resolution requesting award of a bid for the construction of State Route 42 at King Mill Road Intersection Improvement. Our presenter is Mr. Rocky Ramirez, Sploes Transportation Project Director, exhibit number nine. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Stairway 42 at King Mill Road is designated as Sploes Three Transportation Project. Seal bids were solicited for the construction of the improvements of this intersection. We received 10 seal bids, and they were reviewed by our staff. Staff recommends the award to the low bidder, which was Lambert Sand and Gravel, in the amount of $1,053,438.98. Funding for this project is available within the project.
Do we have any questions or comments pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
Yes, ma'am, this is going to take us a few minutes, because it, it actually, Rocky, this comes from several comments that have been made and several things that have been said, and I understand this is Commissioner Holder's district, but I'm going to kind of chime in here, because this, this property is the property where that, you know, obviously that Lambert's bought to us, that, you know, they've owned for, I don't know how many generations, longer than I've been in Henry County, and I've been here 30 years, and I know there were some issues there. But I count here 10 bidders that are all qualified, and that have all met requirements, and have all done work, for the most part, most of them, I don't know that all of them, but for the most part, the majority of this list has done work for Henry County in the past. Also, I would reiterate that Lambert came to us about a year ago. I can't remember the road, but I specifically brought him up to the podium, because he was so much lower than Ersnell, Matthews, Pittman, and some of the others. And I brought him up to the podium, because I felt like that there was an issue there that maybe, he may have missed something, and wanted to give him an opportunity to get out. His numbers were good, he performed that contract, and he saved Henry County's citizens, I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood, $300,000, $400,000 difference. I'm not 100% sure, but it was, it was in the mid-six figures that he saved Henry County. So for the, those that, that everything appears to be a conspiracy, because there's something that the Lambert, you know, and I've heard from just a few that made the comments that it's just wrong that somebody should be able to do that. I, I totally disagree with that. This was a closed bid, there were 10 bidders, and to those who have an issue with that, I would simply state, obviously, you would rather us go to another bidder and pay more taxpayer money. And obviously, you don't know how the system works. So therefore, I just wanted to make those comments, because we kind of grow weary of the comments of, "Follow the money." You know, we're following the money here. He's the, he has the best bid of 10 qualified bidders. So in that respect, I would say that maybe those that have issues with this and the conspiracy theorists would maybe do a little bit of homework and check into those things that they have issues with. And if they would do that, then maybe they wouldn't look so foolish when they send that out. I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into this, and the fact that our people, you in particular, and our staff have put together, we've got 10 bids from 10, I don't know all of them, but I'd say from seven or eight very qualified bidders. Ersnell, Matthews, CMS, I mean, these guys have, these guys have been in it for a long time, as well as Mr. Lambert. And I don't think it's, it would be, it's proper for us to say, well, just because he owned property, that he shouldn't be able to bid something. That doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. So I just wanted to go on public, on record, as stating, you know, my opinions of that, and what I feel about it, and, you know, and I'm sure that my phone's going to light up, and I'm going to get some more from it. But maybe, to those who think that, you know, there's something upside down or wrong's going on here, you know, do your homework, and then, you know, look into what you're doing before you just go out there and tell lies. And that's what's going on here. I apologize for this little diatribe that I've gone into, but I felt like it was necessary, because there's a lot of times when we get, we are the ones that, you know, under the table, we're all going to get rich on this. I don't understand some of that, I really don't. I look under the table all the time, I hadn't seen anything under there yet. But, you know, having said that, I just want to be sure that it's understood, that Mr. Lambert's been doing work here for longer than I've been in the county, and I think Mr. Holder could help me with the timeframe.
That's correct.
And he's been doing roadwork for an awfully long time.
That's correct.
And he's given us, obviously, he's given us good bids, because he's done an awful lot of work here.
And good work.
And it's a closed bid list, and they don't know about, you know, our, we don't even know what the bids are. The board doesn't even, you know, they go through the purchasing, we don't have any idea who's going to be low, what, when, or where.
That's correct.
So just wanted to make sure that, that that was understood, and if anybody has any issues with it, if they'll just give me a call, I'll be more than happy to meet with them anytime, anywhere, and explain it to them. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Rocky, for the, for the sake of, of citizens who may be watching that say, you know, I don't know what that process is, explain a little bit of how you get to the point we're at today where we're awarding a bid.
Okay. Usually, once we, once we, we finish the design and we acquire all the right-of-way, we'll put a bid package together, which is the set of plans and the documents, which the documents contain all the line items, the specific line items that they're going to be building the road for. And we advertise in the paper twice, or two Fridays, and also is on the internet, so it's also access on the internet available. We give them about, roughly about a month of advertisement. Once the period comes to open the bids, they're supposed to, they're, they come to the purchasing department, just like Commissioner Bowman mentioned a moment ago, and they're in a sealed envelope. And Glenn Purser, who is the Assistant Purchasing Director, opens those bids. So now that it's Sploes, we don't even, we don't know what they are. So they come directly on that day to purchasing, they open the bid, it's an open bid, public can be there, it's advertised on the internet, on the paper. They're opening at that moment, and he reads the, the numbers per each individual vendor. And then, once we get those back, we'll review the numbers, and we'll put it in the agenda for approval.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members?
I would like to make a comment, Madam Chair.
Just to hop up on something that Commissioner Bowman was stating, and what he was pretty much alluding to, is that there's so many times that, you know, we don't even know that this stuff, for me, a lot of times, I don't even know things are out to bid until we get the book. And, and for what he was saying, that, I mean, when we get the book and we see the vendors then, that's the first, that most of the time, we see it. On day-to-day problems that we deal with in our districts and in the county, a lot of the citizens will go online and see what's on the agenda before, a lot of times, we realize what, what we're being faced with. So I have to echo what Commissioner Bowman was saying on that. It's, you know, this is, you know, I seen these for the first time, I think it was last Friday, or Thursday, when I've, when I got my book, so.
Well, the process is good, too, because it takes away any appearance of improper behavior or favoritism or anything like that, so that's, that's good that the process is in place. Mr. Holder, did you have a comment?
I do. Rocky, do you have a bid tabulation sheet similar to what we have?
I don't have it with me, but I can make...
I would ask that you step forward and, and put it on the overhead.
I'll be now, I'm sorry.
So that, so that the people can see, from the low to the high was approximately $300,000, from the lowest to the next, the high was $3,000. I know people get tired of, of a history lesson, but this is one, and Commissioner Bowman touched on part of it. The road that we were talking about, or that he was, one of the roads that could have been the one that he was alluding to, was a road that was in my district, it was North Union Grove Road, and I believe Lambert did save $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 over the next highest bidder.
Correct.
In fact, he was angry at himself for leaving so much on the tape, on the table, not under the tape.
On, on. Make a clear.
These things occur, and, and let's, let's add a common sense factor, and I know the county manager told me in a previous meeting that common sense sometime got lost, and it does. Why could, in common sense, why could Lambert afford to be a low bidder on this? Because it's next door, the mobilization costs, the transportation daily costs, are to where he, it, it means something, it is significant. I've received some of the emails and phone calls about this bid also. And certainly, politically, I was certainly damaged in the last rezoning of Lambert's property, and I'll just have to take that, because I contend that we made the right decision. But let's find out which came first, okay? This road was designated not because of the Lambert rezoning, it was designated as, as necessary because of Whirlpool coming in. And why, obviously, anybody that rides along Highway 42 knows that all of the D cells and the left turns that are currently on 42 is not a result of the Lambert rezoning, it's because of Whirlpool and the various other places that are there. And at the time, Whirlpool and their developers gave Henry County $200,000 to improve the intersection at Highway 42 and King Mill Road. And it was the recommendation from Georgia DOT that rather than having two signals, one at the old, or the existing King Mill as we know it today, and to have another one at King Mill West, for lack of a better term, they encouraged us to end up with a four-way intersection and to join the roads. This was prior to Lambert's request for rezoning. Let's go back a little further. Lambert's property was designated on the land use map many, many, many years before there was even a consideration of a Whirlpool or realignment of King Mill Road. Theoretically, Ray Lambert could go today and develop his property on his road, I say his road, on King Mill Road, as it stands today. So these are two separate, totally separate issues, and I just wanted to clear that, because if anybody finds that I have said anything that's wrong and is not factual, I'm sure I'll be told. But if you do, please let me know. But again, look at the bids, I want everybody to be able to see the bids. The commissioners don't touch the bids.
And it was, as you can see, the numbers are very competitive, too, you know?
Very competitive. You see within 3,000, 16,000, 17,000, 20,000. So, I mean, they're all very close, but from the lowest to the highest, $300,000 spread, significant. So I just, nevertheless, I thought it was important that I make this comment, I know there are people that are going to believe what they want to believe, and it means nothing to them that it's still a conspiracy, but I wanted to show the facts.
Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, if not, there's a resolution before you approving the award of the, of the bid for the construction of the intersection of State Route 42 and Kings Mill Road to Lambert Sand and Gravel, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can get away. Madam Chair, you might have a second?
Go ahead.
I heard some good news yesterday about Foster Road, you might share that with the audience.
Yes, sir. Finally had a little bit of good break in the, in the weather, and we were able to pave Foster Drive, those approaches, binder and topping, so the paving is complete, the barrier wall is also complete. Now, today, we were going to try to do the grading on the shoulders, but it might be too wet, or I think there's some rain, maybe some snow, but tomorrow, they'll be coming back, they're going to grade the shoulders. We're going to be placing the guardrail probably first of next week, so hopefully, we can, we're expecting, if weather permits, by next Friday, was the 4th, the 13th, I believe, to be completed, hopefully, so.
Good news, that's great. I get a lot of calls from Foster, so I think we're probably within a two-week window.
Within, within a two-week window that we should complete it and have it open for the traveling public, yes, sir.
Thank you, Rocky.
It's like extension, I know that we, I actually rode down, you know, down past the waterworks, we kind of get down to that low area.
Mm-hmm.
Has any of this weather helped us any there, or are we still too wet?
It has, and it is, is still wet, but in, in the time that we had a little bit, bit of break on the weather, we were able to work in front of the Union Grove Schools, so all that widening is complete in that area. So the intersection at 155, that area, pretty much all of the rock is in place now, so once we get a little better break, we need at least two, two good solid weeks of good sunshine to be able to work in that bottom area for that to dry up good enough.
Flat rock and old conyers that divides Commissioner Bazler and myself, we, we, it doesn't appear that that should be quite as wet. We don't have a bridge or anything we're having to deal with there, how are we looking?
Utility-wise, they're just about done, I think the last company working there is AT&T, and they should be done by this week, so we should be able to see some forces coming in, starting placing more pipes and, and starting doing the grading on that one also.
Okay, all right, sir. I do have a question for Terry when we get an opportunity. But I don't know if anybody else may have anything for Rocky?
Anybody else have anything for Rocky? All right, you're off the hot seat.
Thank you.
Terry, Miller's Mill Road, are we, are we next in line?
Yes, sir, I think we're currently working at Noah's, Noah's Ark, completing that road, and if, again, what we're looking for is about three or four days of sunshine in the road, so when we do the road, we can pave it all at one time and try to eliminate any joints. If we go out there and have a day, we'll have a joint and then pick back up, and we're trying to avoid that to make a good, smooth ride. So if we get three or four days in a row of sunshine, we'll be, we'll be on Miller's Mill.
I understand, so we're, I mean, in relation to Noah's Ark, or can you give me, I, I understand the weather part, but are, are, would we be two or three days out from, is Noah's Ark complete, getting close, or?
Well, Noah's Ark, actually, what we're doing is patching, much like what we did on Miller's Mill. So, you know, we can go out there and do a day, if we get a day's work, we can go out there and patch a section, so that's what they're doing on Noah's Ark. I would like, if we get the weather while our crews are there and equipment's there, to go ahead and top that road while we're there. So as soon as we get through with that, I don't see why we couldn't move to Miller's Mill and do that topping as well.
Well, obviously, we don't want joints in Miller's Mill, if we can come from it, we'd like, that, that is a well-used route, and I think it may slow down a little bit when the Eastlake connectors and Eagles Landing connector are all in place. I appreciate that, thank you.
The next item on the agenda, excuse me, is an appointment to the Board of Health. You have before you a resolution, Ms. Frances Slaton has faithfully served as an appointee, but has made the decision to no longer serve on the board, so there is a vacancy. Mr. James Banaski Jr. was nominated to fill that seat, and you were given some information, Mr. Banaski currently works for the Centers for Disease Control, had a very impressive resume, and as a resident of Henry County, would like to serve on that board. And so with that being said, I would look for someone to make a motion to that effect.
I move to approve, Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, at this time, we're going to move on to the approvals of, of the minutes, and we're going to have to do these separately, as Mr. Jeffries was absent for one of those. So looking at December 15th, January 19th... So looking at December fifteenth, January nineteenth, we had two sets of minutes on January nineteenth, is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve those by the full Board.
I move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Okay, motion carries, Mr. Jeffries, you were here for those three. Motion carries five zero. The next set was from January fifth of two thousand and ten, and Mr. Jeffries was absent for this meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? If not, I will entertain a motion.
No.
We have motion to approve by Mr. Bowman with a second by Mr. Stany, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. Mr. County Manager, any comments for public session?
Just a couple of points of information. Senior Judge McGarrett at the behest of the local bar association has requested that the Georgia Supreme Court spend a day in Henry County. The Supreme Court is visiting different communities, they've been in Gainesville and Hall, and Judge McGarrett has invited them down here. They probably will be meeting in this room. They're looking at their docket to make sure that maybe they have an appeal that is from this area. So they will be visiting sometime in the next month or so. I'll keep you updated on that. The Henry County Water and Sewer Association Authority has finished their bond refinancing that they've been working on, they've been kind of waiting on the market. They've attained a three percent savings there, which is a significant amount, so they have followed through on that. As you all know, we have been, I've been working with Tim Coley to handle several, I guess, local recreation association squabbles and disputes out there at various parks. I think we have those under control. If you all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those, but I think each of those have been addressed and taken care of, as best I can tell right now. And I just felt like I needed to update you on those few points.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Ms. County Attorney, any comments?
No, ma'am.
At this time, we do have one individual signed up for public comment. Gwen Nishizaki, seven forty-three Windbrook Drive in McDonough, is here to speak on the campground road extension, and you have five minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you once again for your time. My name is Gwen Nishizaki, seven forty-three Windbrook Drive, McDonough. Although the address is McDonough, we are in the city of Stockbridge Limits, and probably some of you that have been here longer than me know the history of that and the rural post office, et cetera. So, yeah, I'm my third month in a row to speak. It's been a good learning experience. I've learned that not only do I speak to you, but there are citizens that watch on TV and maybe on the computer, and I've been stopped by friends as well as people I don't know. I had a gentleman stop me at Publix the other day and say, "They're fixing to mess up your subdivision real good, aren't they?" I had to say, "Yes, sir, it appears they are." And so it's been a good learning experience for me, and I'm back again to make two points, I guess, today. First of all, no one in the subdivision is opposed to a campground road extension. It's gonna benefit the county, and it's a good idea. What we are opposed to is bisecting our subdivision. Our three hundred and nine houses separating the pool from the tennis courts and clubhouse, putting children at peril, this is what we're opposed to. We have a resident in our subdivision that works for the Georgia Department of Transportation. It's my understanding that the national government would not split a subdivision in half. It's my understanding that the state government would not split a subdivision in half. So I come to ask you today, how is it that the local leaders, the people that we're the closest to, that we live amongst, can consider putting this road through our subdivision? I know that the land was donated when the subdivision was created, that may not be the correct terminology, the land was donated when the subdivision was rezoned. At one point in time, that was supposed to be two separate subdivisions. It wouldn't have been split because it would have been two separate subdivisions. Time and things have changed again and again from nineteen ninety-six, and so again, I come to you to say, please don't split our subdivision in half. Please don't put our families at risk financially, physically. Twenty thousand cars on that road, the amount of pollution, the amount of trash, there is nothing good for the residents of our subdivision in this proposal. There are other alternates, there is another way to do this road without going through our subdivision. And so I ask you, please, to consider that and to make another choice rather than split our subdivision. And since I have just a minute more of time, I'd like to do a follow-up. Last month, I commented about the Stockbridge Library not having lights, light bulbs. I spoke on February second. On February sixth, I was at the library. Three of the five light bulbs above the desk where you check out the books were missing. I asked when they had submitted their work order, they said it's been so long, we don't know. They did submit another work order that week. I apologize, I didn't get back there before I came here today to follow up, but that's just a little minor issue in the whole funding of Henry County and how money is allocated and spread around. But being as I raised that issue last time, I just wanted to follow up with you on that this time. And I guess, as a final thought, my son still asks me, "How are we gonna trick or treat?" So that's what I leave you with today, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, would you like to comment on the light bulbs in the library?
I can just tell you that I will definitely follow up with building services, and I'm sure those bulbs will be replaced today if they have not been already.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Stany?
I could, if you don't mind, I'd like to share a little bit of the history lesson on your subdivision, you know. You keep coming to us, and we didn't create a lot of the problems. Your subdivision was zoned as one subdivision, you realize that, correct?
Yes.
The division that created the second subdivision was created through the city of Stockbridge. When y'all were annexed in, it's one subdivision that came two subdivisions. So I'm wondering if you're taking some of your same concerns back up to the city of Stockbridge?
I personally have not, however, Lee Stewart, who's mayor of Stockbridge, has met with people in our subdivision, and yes, he is aware of our concerns, and apparently, from what I understand, he has an alternate route that he is willing to propose.
Well, we would welcome him, but I didn't know if you had taken some of these same concerns to the city.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Holder.
I was sitting here the night that that proposal or request for rezoning took place. That was not a split subdivision at that moment. The only subdivision that was approved with conditions, and I'm gonna defer to staff to back me up on this, but I think I'm right, was on one side of the road. The next year, that property was annexed into the city of Stockbridge, and the second section of that subdivision was actually zoned and conditioned by the city of Stockbridge, not by Henry County. It only came to us one time, and that was for the rezoning of a piece of property, and that road was on the outer side of that. We didn't split a subdivision. Stockbridge created a split subdivision when they annexed and they zoned the other side and added it to as being a part of that subdivision. And if I'm wrong, if somebody was staff, am I right or wrong?
That's right.
So like Commissioner Stany said, we will take as much blame as we can. We accepted the donation because we knew that there was a route that was needed, but we did not split a subdivision. That second section of that subdivision, or phase two or whatever, came as a result of the city of Stockbridge approving, rezoning, and conditioning that subdivision, that phase. Do your homework, go to Stockbridge, look at it, and see if I'm telling you wrong, come back down here and tell us, Mr. Holder, you're wrong. And I think you're gonna find I'm right. And as far as an alternative route, if Mayor Stewart has one and is willing to pay, we're willing to listen. Just for food for thought.
Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Also, and I believe Mr. Hen was at this town hall meeting that I attended last, I think it was Saturday, and Mayor Stewart, his comments were pretty straightforward, that he was actually for, that he never mentioned a alternate route. He said, verbatim, "I am for the campground extension." And then, of course, we went on to some other things, but never in that conversation was it ever brought up that he had a quote-unquote, and you can pull the minutes from, if, I have a doubt there'd be minutes, because that was the town hall meeting, but at that time, he said that he was for it. Now, just as the others have said, we're taking a lot of heat on something that we didn't do. And obviously, the only person that was on the Board at the time, out of everyone sitting here, was Commissioner Holder. The rest of us were not even on the Board when that took place, so just wanted to clear that up. He is not, as a representative of the Stockbridge District, he has not contacted me or talked to me about any other quote-unquote alternate route. And I feel like maybe, maybe he should. If he has one, I think, myself being the Commissioner, that, not in that particular district, but I have Stockbridge, that actually belongs to Commissioner Stany, but I have the Stockbridge District, so I should be involved in that because mine starts at Peach Road and goes the other way. So, you know, and I certainly would hope that they would bring that to Commissioner Stany, being his district, that they would actually have an alternate route. So I'm not sure that that is an issue. Maybe you should carry that back to Stockbridge and find out exactly where that alternate route would be. And that's all I have. Thank you.
The upcoming meetings and events are Monday, March fifteenth at nine a.m. and Tuesday, March sixteenth at six thirty p.m. These are both regular Board meetings. Monday, April fifth at nine a.m., it is a workshop meeting. Tuesday, April sixth at nine a.m., a regular Board meeting. If there is no further business to come before this forward, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Basler?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stany, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.